Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Pardon my appearance, but I'm working. And I gotta go back to work. This is a hobby, by the way, being the mayor. Just kidding, just kidding. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, November the fifth.
Fifth.
And for the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Please rise and let's bow our heads this evening and thank the Lord for our daily blessings. And let's pray for those who are less fortunate. We pray for all the elected and re-elected leadership to stay true to the mission of public service so that their sacrifice touch the lives of those whom they serve and for the greater good of our community. We pray for those who are alone, frail, sick, and especially during the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday season. We pray for the safe return of our soldiers who are tasked with protecting our borders. And we pray for our law enforcement and firefighter community. We pray for world peace and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Captain, for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see it. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, roll call. Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to take some items, if you don't mind, out of order. First thing that I have on the agenda that I want to take out of order is item number seven, Report of the City Engineers.
Item number seven, Report of the City Engineers.
And I know we have an item. Mr. Alonso.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Manager. In our last meeting, I expressed to you guys I wanted to present a kind of a status of where we are and all the projects that we have going on in the city right now. So what I did is I prepared a memorandum that you should have in front of you. I do have a color copy if you want it, but it does have some of the renderings up here in color. And basically, you know, we'll go over the projects that we have going on. There's quite a bit going on, so I felt it was necessary to brief you all on the happenings in the city. So, you know, we'll start off by, you know, giving you a quick overview. Believe it or not, we have about $2.3 million of capital projects in the pipeline right now for the next, you know, six months to a year, including all the buildings that we've been presenting to you over the past few months. So what I'd like to do is just go project by project and give you an overview of each project, where we are in terms of the procurement, if it's been awarded, and when we anticipate the completion dates, the budgets, and all that to be. But I'd like to start off with the Building Department, just give you guys a status of where we are with that. As you know, we started the Building Department last year in January, and we're closing in on the first year of having an operational Building Department in the City of West Miami. To date, we've actually issued 278 permits to date. There's been quite a bit of work over the last year. Out of those permits, 181 are building, 21 plumbing, 26 mechanic, 150 electrical, as you can see in front of you. And out of those permits, 84 have already been issued certificates of completion or occupancy. So as you can see, we've been quite active over the last year. It's been a bit of a learning curve, as you could imagine, over the last year, but I think we're over it and our department is operating fully right now with our staff and in coordination with Juan's staff here at the department being the interface with the client. And I think we've worked out a lot of the kinks over the first few months and things are so far running smoothly. Currently, we are reviewing permits for some of the large projects that are coming up. You know, the project on 67th and 20th, as you can all see every day, is coming up quickly. We're working closely with them to inspect that and get that project underway. We're also reviewing right now their other project, the same developer doing Gables, Prado, over on 57th and 10th, and we're also reviewing the Publix on 67th and 16th. So exciting, big projects coming along, and we'll keep you guys posted as to what we know as the Building Department, so you guys are abreast of those projects. So let's move along to some of the capital projects that we're doing. First project we have is the citywide, if you can see in front of you, the number two in the memo, the citywide LAP traffic calming improvements. This is a project that we started 20 years, 15, 20 years ago with a traffic master plan for the city, and little by little, we've been implementing it over the years as funding has become available. And we were lucky enough last year to win a grant, a TAP grant, with FDOT, which has enabled us, enabled us basically to complete our master plan and finish all the traffic calming improvements throughout the city. And in addition, improve some of the previous work that we've done by adding lighting and things of that nature. So our traffic plan will be fully implemented, and we've actually added lighting in addition to what we had in the plan. So that'll be fully funded this year through an FDOT TAP grant and through certaxes. We actually have that project's gonna come out. We're gonna put it out to bid in about two weeks, and we anticipate having someone selected by the end of the month and moving forward with that. And the project completion date should be around November of 2015, so it'll take approximately a year from now to go through the procurement, select the contractor, and complete construction. So the next item on the list is the City of West Miami Public Works and Building Department facility, something we've brought to you. We've been developing over the past year. The rendering here on the left is a depiction of what you have on your memo. As you know, this is a building that's been sorely needed. Juan's been working out of that little office, crammed in there with three other staff members and trying to service now, four other staff members, sorry, trying to service the Building Department out of there, trying to service Public Works. And as you can imagine, they've outgrown the building. So this is, again, another exciting project for the city. The budget we have right now, $600,000. That's being funded through a bank loan and impact fees, as the manager has briefed you. And we actually just put that out to bid, and we anticipate having contractors selected early December, actually a design builder selected early in December. And the schedule for that project's approximately a year. So by the end of 2015, that building will be complete and operational. Now, on the other side of the parking lot, we have the City of West Miami Police Department expansion. Again, another project which we've developed design criteria for. You can see here the renderings, and it's also in front of you in your memo. This will be adding the second floor to the police station that's adjacent to us here, adding approximately 2,100 square feet of space for offices, offices for the police command officers and the police chief, including several other offices for internal affairs, interrogation, a conference room, and a lobby reception area on the second floor. So this project budgeted right now is $400,000. Funding source, right now, we're pursuing a grant with the USDA for potential funds there, and we're also gonna use equitable sharing funds to build the project. We anticipate a bid date sometime in February. We still have to go through the procurement, get the design criteria documents ready, but we anticipate having a selection in February and completing the project, again, by the end of 2015, possibly early 2016, depending on how quick we get the procurement out.
If awarded the grant, correct?
If awarded the grant, correct, yeah. But we'll have, you know, we'll have, the criteria is essentially done, and we'll develop the documents, so they'll be basically shovel-ready and ready to go, so. The next item, the citywide potable water master plan. This is an item that was approved at the last meeting. As you know, the city has a crumbling water, potable water infrastructure. It's well documented, over the years, we've had leaks all over the city and ruptures and constant repairs. So finally, we were able to secure a grant where we can look at this thing holistically and provide a comprehensive master plan to what the improvements will be over the next five to 10 years as funding becomes available and bring our system up to current standards. Project budget there, $200,000. The source, again, an FDP grant that we recently secured. The project was awarded last month, and we anticipate a completion date of October of next year with the master plan. And then from there, again, as funding becomes available, we'll roll out the capital improvement program for potable water. Next project, Garden Club Park. Again, so this one, this one, again, was recently discussed at one of our meetings. It's a project budget $250,000 for the expansion of the Garden Club Park, which was originally built to basically mitigate for the park that was lost when we constructed the stormwater pump stations in the early 2000s. And the city was lucky enough to be able to acquire the property next door through impact fees, and we're gonna develop that as an expansion of the park. And we do have the rendering, I think it's behind one of these boards, but it is in front of you. And it will include new playgrounds, new site furnishing, a few gazebo's, restrooms, and lighting. So again, that project, we anticipate we're gonna be having a very busy November, December, as we're putting out a lot of advertisements, but that's gonna be advertised next week, and we should have a selection by early December. And the project completion date there is, we anticipate, April of 2015. So the month of December, there'll be a lot of procurements hitting the street and being constructed throughout the year. Next item on the memo was the recreational center electrical improvements. This is a project which was awarded a few months ago, but we secured the FERDAP grant and bank loan that's gonna fund it. This is basically to upgrade the lighting conduits, control panels, wiring for the lighting at the rec center over on 16th Street, I'm sorry, 18th Street. So the project budget there, $67,000. And again, as we stated, we're already, we're gonna issue NTP early December, and we anticipate that project to be done by the end of January, so it should be a quick turnaround. City Hall roofing improvements. This is a project which I believe they're gonna, it's on the agenda today for award, $65,000 contract. The bid was awarded this week, and it'll be for the roof replacement here in City Hall, some roofing repairs, I'm sorry, not a replacement. Completion date, by the end of January, should have that completed. And finally, miscellaneous drainage improvements. There were several locations identified last year having some localized flooding issues. Those improvements were designed and put out to bid, and it's $35,000 coming out of the capital improvement budget. It was awarded this year, and we anticipate completing it by the end of the year, some small spot improvements for drainage. So that's what we got going on. It's a lot, lot, lot of little projects going on and a couple of nice big ones, but definitely, this is good times for the city, and I commend the staff and everyone for being able to really secure the grants to help us get all these projects underway. A lot of work for a small municipality, it's excellent.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for the engineer?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Alonso.
Yes, sir.
When do you think the, the study of the potable water will be done, will be finished?
The final, the complete study, we anticipate October 2015.
Next year?
Yes, of next year.
Good.
Yeah. So what, there'll be two phases, the first phase?
Yeah, one year.
Yeah, one year, approximately, basically six months of analyzing the existing system and then six months to develop the capital plan.
Another question. In those projects, is included the roof?
Tonight.
Huh?
Tonight.
Oh, tonight, okay.
Yeah. And I did mention the re-roofing, and then that you guys will be seeing that tonight on the agenda.
Well, a big problem with the roof in this building.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the engineer? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll take the roof on the next one, or you wanna read into the record and might as well?
The roof bid on item L, I think it is.
Yes.
Since we're on the subject.
Do you want to?
Can you read it into the record, please?
Yes, items, it includes items K and L. Item K is the bid tabulation report by the Office of the City Clerk in reference to the modified roof system for City of West Miami project. And item L is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Margot Roofing for an amount of $50,000 and zero cents for the purpose of accomplishing the modified roof system for the City of West Miami municipal building, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We went out for a rebid on this project because the first bid came in at $75,000, which was way over our budget. And the bid at that time was missing several requirements of the bid, so we asked for your indulgence to go ahead and go out for rebid. We did. We opened it on November 3rd, this Monday, and we had one bidder that submitted a bid amount of $50,000 for the work that we need done to both the commission chamber roof and the city hall roof. We have checked out their references. They've been a company that's had many large projects with other private companies, and they have gotten very good satisfaction ratings from them. We are comfortable with their, with their experience, and we recommend award to them as the low bidder of $50,000. We sat with our roofing inspector during the pre-bid and also after we received the bid, and they understand the type of materials that we want and the quality of work that we're looking for.
Thank you. The engineers have anything? Are you in favor, are you recommending?
Yeah, yes, we concur with Juan, and we have no objections.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, from a legal point of view?
Being totally proper advertised and bid it, so recommendation of the department would be forthcoming, and it has, and it's up to you now to award it or not award it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. I need a second. Okay?
For the record, we published it in the Miami Herald.
Mr. Mayor, before you call the vote, I think it would be important to allocate the funding or earmark the funding for the record. I believe that Mr. Penna and I would recommend that we take this money out of the impact fees coming in from the second project for GSA fees. And so I believe that should be entertained in your resolution or in your motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you call?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
Thank you. I would like to go back to item eight, committee report. Just wanted to report something really quick, that it should not be that quick, but nevertheless, Commissioner Blanca couldn't be present tonight, and she, she's feeling ill, and she couldn't be here. And she asked me to read something into the record, and that is that, according to her, and you'll see in a moment what I'm talking about. "I want all you to know that last October, our city manager had an anniversary of 20 years of service as a city manager, which is the longest person on this position in Miami-Dade County. Although I know she has been with us for over 20 years, at this time, I would like for us to give her a proclamation or recognition for the next meeting." Thank you, Commissioner Candida Blanca. And I think it's well deserved.
Twenty as city manager. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
No.
Thirty years, more than thirty years as employee, more than 20 years as a manager. Yoli, I don't want to talk about years, but you have been many years here.
Yes.
You started at 15.
A long time. Yes, I was a baby. I was a baby.
At this time, I ask for everybody's blessing.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done.
Thank you.
Next item. Also, I want to take out of order, go right into new business, item 11B.
11B. Okay, Mr. Mayor. Item 11B is a presentation by Florida East Coast Industries in reference to 70th Avenue Corridor concept for future development, sponsored by Mayor Mujina, by Voli Morante and Jose Gonzalez from Florida East Coast Industries.
And also Catherine Moore is with the project. She is with Influence Communication, and that is the team here this evening.
Yes, and Alfred Lurigados in PE.
Welcome to the City of West Miami.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission, Madam Manager, congratulations.
Thank you.
On being the dean of city managers, Mr. Attorney and Madam Clerk, and thank you for indulging us this evening with a short presentation. As always, you've been very supportive of community-wide efforts. When we were here last time, we talked to you about one of our sister companies, All Aboard Florida, and you were very receptive and passed a resolution, and you see construction beginning in Miami-Dade County next to the building downtown. And now, this evening, we're here to talk to you about Ludlum Trail. We've had the opportunity to meet with some of you, and this evening Alfred Lurigados will lead you through a short, quick presentation on some of the highlights.
Thank you, Roli. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Miss Madam Manager, Clerk, and Attorney, thank you for having us. My name is Alfred Lurigados, and we are out of 2855 La Jun Road, and I represent Florida East Coast Industries, and our operating company that deals with this corridor in front of you is Flagler. And earlier, you got a map that shows the Ludlum Trail Corridor. What's very unique about this corridor, this is a 6.2-mile-long, 72-acre property, approximately 100 feet wide, all the way from northwest 7th Street, close to Miami International Airport, all the way down south to Dade Land. And this is a very unique property. As some of you may know, this was a former rail corridor, now an abandoned rail corridor, and we're looking to repurpose this into a new, a new facility, a new development. And we've, a lot of different agencies and entities have looked at this for many different purposes, and this is the first time that the landowner itself is looking at a new opportunity. We filed under the Miami-Dade County Planning Process a comprehensive development master plan application that goes to change the land use designation currently from transportation to a development opportunity with a public greenway amenity. So we're looking to create a 6.2-mile-long public greenway with real estate components developed alongside to create an eyes-on-the-trail, to create a new amenity, to create a walking and cycling amenity that goes right near the western boundary of your city. We're very excited about the opportunity that this could present. It runs actually between the Walmart, it's the property just east of the new Walmart facility that runs south. So this is a potentially great opportunity for brand-new development along the city, a walkable, bikeable area that could present great opportunities. We're very excited about this. We are looking at the nodes in front of you, and I want to just point to a couple of quick points. The orange circles that you see on the map are the higher-density nodes, so those are Dade Land, Bird Road, and the Blue Lagoon parcels. The secondary-density nodes, which is just a little lighter on, as far as what type of development would be there, are the blue circles on there, and you see Coral Way, Tamiami Trail, and Flagler Street. I'd like to focus mostly on Coral Way and Tamiami because those are the ones specifically that can affect the city the most. We feel that between those two, you could have a linear greenway, wider park area, because this won't just be a single trail that would be 20 feet wide. There's areas for pocket parks, there's areas for green space development, there's gonna be areas for the real estate development, and yet, at the nodes, at the green circles, you'll have mixed-use commercial, could be multifamily, you'll have a lot of different items. We are currently in the process of master planning the entire property, all the way from Dade Land to the airport. And in the future, we'd love to come back and give you an overview of the master plan once we have that done. The process that goes to the county now, November 19th, we go for transmittal to the state, and hopefully, we get a positive transmittal. We, once comments come back from the state, DCA office will go back to County Commission in February, March timeframe. And at that point, we'd love to come back and present to the city again another update. So thank you for the, for the time, and we'd love to take any questions at this point, if you have any.
Do you have any questions?
I do. These different trails that you referenced here, those were existing rails?
Most of them, most of them are abandoned rail corridors. For example, Katy Trail in Dallas, 11th Street in Washington is not a abandoned rail track, but Katy Trail in Dallas, some of you may have heard of the High Line in New York City. Chicago 606 is also an abandoned rail track. Some of those are elevated rail tracks, and those cities, since they were so urban, the tracks were elevated back in the day. Our corridor is more a grade, almost like Katy Trail in Dallas. The best example I could, I could point to are Katy Trail in Dallas and the Belt Line in Atlanta that have a real estate component almost attached to the trail, and that, those are the ones that we're trying to mirror the most because the real estate values adjacent to the trail and the amenities that have come around the trail, not just within a quarter mile in each direction of the trail, have blossomed in those two specific examples.
Can you be a little bit more specific, the area between Coral Way and Tamiami? Is it gonna be all green area? It's all linear, or?
Between Coral Way and Tamiami, there's a lot of single-family product.
Okay.
Existing to each side, so we're probably gonna match some single-family product in pockets, but that presents an opportunity for parks and pocket parks in between those. And as you get closer to Tamiami Trail, you're looking at more of a industrial warehouses that you've seen in some of the, in some of the areas there. For example, Century Plumbing is, I believe, on, almost on the northern end, close to 8th Street. So we're looking at some industrial on the northern end, but single-family product as you get south of Southwest 12th Street.
And for the most part, is it 100 feet?
Yes.
Wide, all the way, or do you have wider areas?
There's, it's 100 feet almost entirely. There's two little sections. I think one is on, one is on Coral Way on the south side by Bremen Honda. That's maybe 70 feet wide, but it's just one pinch point. And then there's another pinch point, I think, closer to Miller.
But not more than 100?
Not more than 100. We own one parcel to the other side, near Bird Road, but that's it, so only 100.
Okay. Very excited about it.
Thank you, Madam.
I'm glad you got approval from the county, and, I mean, you got our support.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and if you, and City Commissioners, if you entertain, I think there's an item before you as a possible resolution of support, we would greatly appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11C.
I have a comment about this.
Can you hold on just a second? Commissioner, go ahead.
Yes. That, that area, the old railroad, abandoned railroad, between 8th Street and Coral Way. And not only that, all these abandoned railroads, because they are old and they don't use, they are, you know, full of trash and sometimes are like, once, you remember the guy who escaped from the 36th Street prison once? He was walking through the railroad, he was hiding there in the rail tracks, and so, so, so. So I really prefer, I think it will be much better for the community, has something clean lighting with some life around and houses or businesses. I prefer that. Really, I'm, I'm for this too. I think it's going to be enhanced for our neighborhood. Yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree. That improvement is not only, it's gonna sprinkle around the adjacent properties and for the better, actually. Can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11C, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, in support of the proposed Miami-Dade County Comprehensive Development Master Plan change requested by Flagler Development for the Ludlum Trail rail corridor and providing for an effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Motion.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote?
Yes. Commissioner Blanes, I'm sorry, I apologize. Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good luck, my friend. I really wish to see something there, know that, you know, all the space, you know, lost in the space there.
Good seeing you, Alfred.
Can you read item 11A, please?
11A, comprehensive presentation of projects and progress of city projects by TiVo Lean International.
That was a.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That was already addressed.
Okay. I'm sorry, I got confused. Item?
Mr. Mayor?
D. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, it, the PB, the collective bargaining agreement is, I believe, the next item.
11D, Mr. Mayor.
11D.
11D. Yes, item 11D, report by the Office of the City Manager in reference to collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Miami and the Police Benevolent Association for the contract commencing October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2016, a two-year contract for law enforcement personnel by city manager.
Thank you, and the first order of business would be to recognize Christina Escobar. She's the counsel for the PBA, along with Mr. James Casey, who's not here this evening. Christina, welcome to the city.
Good evening.
And Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission were here tonight seeking your blessing or ratification for the recently negotiated contract for collective bargaining, which basically is the contract of the Bible that guides and dictates the benefit and wage package for our sworn law enforcement officers. package for our sworn law enforcement officers. We had several meetings, we made some progress, and at the end of the day, I think that the city and the PBA recognize that moving forward, we may need to put some of the, a little bit of the, a break in some of the rich benefits and try to protect those officers who are here and have been serving the City of West Miami for many years. But it does address attrition purposes, and this, I think this contract is a good way to start that. So I'd like to yield to Ms. Escobar, if we could, Mr. Mayor, because I think she can capture for us the summary of the items that I believe have been agreed to by the membership. The membership did ratify or did vote in favor of this contract at a recent election.
They did.
And so, what I'd like to do is have either Ms. Escobar or the combination of all of us basically put into the record what the changes consist of before you actually take this to a vote.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. A special thank you to Ms. Aguilar, Mrs. Aguilar, the command staff of the West Miami Police Department. It was honestly a pleasure, it always is a pleasure, to sit across the table and negotiate contracts with the City of West Miami. I will tell you that this contract was ratified, it was brought to the membership, they voted for it. They're very committed to protecting the community and to serving the City of West Miami. As far as the summary, I don't know if it's been presented to the Commissioners in some sort of a summary. But again, I know, and again, I asked Mrs. Aguilar if she can specify that, but I know there was like some, again, there's a separation between the officers and the sergeants that are working presently here today. I know the city had some concerns about future financial issues, which we all understand. And that is why I think that the membership of the West Miami Police Department wanted to cooperate, and has always been willing to cooperate with the city, because it goes, it's a back-and-forth, and that's how they feel about it. So with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Aguilar to summarize.
Thank you. And in your pocket, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Commission, we provided a summary, which is titled, "West Miami Police Department Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement. If approved, this contract takes effect retroactively to October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2016." There are a couple of articles that I'd like to enter into the record. We agreed to modify or add language under Article 18 that addresses the issue of bereavement leave to recognize registered domestic partners or the child or parent of a registered domestic partner, so that that person can, that member of the department can have entitlement to bereavement leave if they have, if they lose a member of their family. The next item is Article 34, and it deals with wages. And it talks about pay raises as of October 1st, 2014. It provides for a 2.5% pay increase across the board. And again, on October 1st, 2015, a 2.5% pay increase across the board to all the members of the department. It provides for a $10 pay increase in what we call the law enforcement certification pay incentive. It goes from $50 to $60, and that's paid on a quarterly basis. Is that correct? So that is a $10 increase every three months to the officers. The merit step increases establishes a two-tier system, and this is moving forward the concerns that Ms. Escobar just reported on. Those officers who were hired before October 1st, 2014, will continue to follow the merit step increase that is, that was, that is in effect if this contract is approved, because we would like to honor the steps that were in the old contract. Any officer hired on or after October 1st, 2014, the merit step increases provides for a lapse of time. And it provides an opportunity for the city to look at these as attrition takes place every, after the first, after the first five years, we're going to look at these increases at 5% in increments of five years until they reach a maximum of 25 years of employment. So, at this time, we have yearly merit increases until they're maxed out. And some of these increases, coupled by the other incentives and COLA raises, just, they add up to a lot of dollars and cents. So, moving forward, anyone accepting a position with the city would fall under this new step increase, anniversary steps. It establishes a, also, the contract will establish a starting salary for a newly hired officer in the amount of $42,500 per year, which is a little bit below what we're at now, correct, sir? Longevity. It also establishes or provides for a two-tier system. Every employee hired prior to October 1st, 2014, will continue to receive longevity payment, and a schedule remains the same. Any officer hired on or after October 1st, 2014, will not receive longevity pay. We will honor their merit step increases or anniversary increases and provide for those increase in that line item. The next item would be the sergeant's salary. Under Appendix A-2, it establishes a pay step scale for sergeants that are promoted on or after October 1st, 2014. Any officer promoted to the position of sergeant will go to a 2.5% pay increase immediately upon promotion from the current salary. That same sergeant will receive a 2.5% pay increase after his or her first year of probation. They will go to Step 3, which is a 3% pay increase the following year. That would be Year 3, correct? So far, okay. And then they go to the last step, which is Step 4, they would receive a 3% pay increase the following year. No additional steps will be provided. Obviously, we have a richer step plan in place now for those officers that are here. But this is moving forward effective October 1st, 2014. Anyone promoted would fall under the new scale. I believe that sergeants right now receive a 15% increase upon promotion. This caps it over a three-year period of time. It caps it at 11%. Am I correct? So we're making some progress in putting some safeguards in place for future years. That's pretty much the meat and potatoes of the articles that we and the membership have agreed, obviously through their able counsel and through our negotiation efforts. And we believe that it may bring a little bit of a financial stability to the city moving forward. Right now, we don't have any sergeant's position open, but in the future, we actually have a sergeant that is scheduled to retire in 2015. So as this attrition takes place, we've built in some safeguards. So we wholeheartedly recommend that you approve or ratify this contract. I think it's in the greater, in the best interest of the City of West Miami and its police department, and the citizens.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Chief, you wanted, or anybody from the police department, add anything to it?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, as the manager and Ms. Escobar have said, we negotiated, it's a two-way street. I think it's beneficial for both the officers, current officers, and the future officers that we will hire through attrition, sergeants that may be promoted that will be promoted. And at the same time, it offers the city a little bit of relief going forward for those new officers or promoted sergeants. So I think it's good, it was negotiated, and it's proper, and it has my blessings.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I want to make a comment. I'm pretty sure maybe Commissioner Rodriguez wants to do something. But I want to make a comment that, I know the administration and the police department has been studying this fairly, and I think our residents, myself, and I think all you fellows, Commissioners and members of the table are happy with the police department, the work they're doing. They're doing a great thing, and I tell you, I think they deserve what they're asking for, because sometimes people ask for something, it's not, really, they don't make it, they have to ask for. But in our case, this, our police department, it's working very professionally, and I'm very happy with the activity they have. So, the administration recommends this, and the police department, you say, agree with that, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And now, a lady from the PBA, her name is Christina, like my granddaughter, so it's a nice name, Christina. So, it's better have you than Mr. Casey, you know, you're more elegant than him. So, my opinion is that I agree with this, and I make a motion, I do it.
Anybody?
Do you want to say something?
Just a comment on recent occurrences. Halloween, Lieutenant Delgado did an outstanding presentation to the annual Halloween party at the recreation center. And our officers were out in force Halloween night. I was out there, I saw them. They did an incredible job. They just, I mean, they do incredible jobs every day, but they outdid themselves on Halloween. They were handing out candy from the cars. I saw them on every street, multiple times, all night, all night. Every time I looked, I turned the corner, there was an officer, and I-
I didn't know they were handing candy.
You see, you missed?
I missed.
I forgot where my candy from. They just did an outstanding job, and I want to thank every one of them for what they did for Halloween for the children. Thank you.
And that's a sign of their commitment to the city, so obviously, the city has to take care of its own, as we call it. So we're all very proud of our department, and we've tried to shelter and keep as whole as possible the officers that have been with us. So, motion?
The power of family, no, we need to, no, we need to read the resolution.
Okay.
Yes, item 11E.
Proper procedure.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11E, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, ratifying the contract between the City of West Miami and the Police Benevolent Association, authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract for the period commencing October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2016, providing, directing the city clerk to include an original contract in the resolution file as part of the record of the November 5th, 2014 City Commission meeting, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you.
Motion. Second.
Okay, can you call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
For zero item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mrs. Escobar.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Chris. I'll call you for the signature.
Can you read item 11M?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11M, report by the Office of the City Attorney in reference to legal challenge red light cameras by City Attorney Jose Villalobos.
We have a representative for AMATSS, so I would like to defer for a report from the company.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Orlando Torres, representing American Traffic Solutions. And I think that Orlando, it would be beneficial for the Mayor and City Commission and the community to know what the, what the issues are in summary and as simple to understand as possible.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come in, kind of discuss, and there's been a lot of information, a lot of misinformation, as is usually the case with some of this, these programs, these safety programs. So, recently, within the last two weeks, there was a ruling out of the Fourth District Court of Appeals to a case from the City of Hollywood. It has a red light program similar to yours. And in that ruling, it came out with a couple of things that were decided that were not followed properly by the City of Hollywood. And I'll try to explain it a little bit, and as I had mentioned before, I don't want to really try to explain the legal terms or the legal interpretation, but just operationally and kind of our company's position on how to remedy this and to move forward. So, what came out of it was, first challenged was that they stated that ATS has unfettered authority to review violations and really decide what's a violation and what's not. That was the first issue. The second issue was that ATS was sending out UTCs or Uniform Traffic citations after a notice of violation expired without having to go back and being reviewed again and issued by a law enforcement officer from the particular city of Hollywood. So, those were the two rulings that really came out of it, and we look at it, those are the two really pieces that are important here. The big problem that happened there, and whether it applies legally or not, the fact of the matter is that what was never introduced into the record, for whatever the reason was, that the way that the process really works is, whatever we review, and I'll explain very quickly how it works, is based on the directions that's provided from the city on the business rules that you provide to us. You tell us what is a violation, based on your criteria, and then we have those in place when we review the violations. So to just quickly explain, because it's really sometimes confusing, the, there's, when a vehicle drives through the red light, the intersection, the camera system will capture an event. Doesn't mean it's a violation, it's a traffic event. And there's a lot of calculations on how that works. That event goes to the ATS office, where there's a bunch of reviewers that look at those, at those events, and then they, when one comes up for the City of West Miami, or in this case, it was Hollywood, they'll look at those, that event, they'll apply the business rules for that city. That city says, this is the criteria for a violation, and if it meets your criteria, then they will issue that, that event or that violation now to the city. What ends up happening there is, the law enforcement officer for the city will then review it, and ultimately makes that decision on what is a violation or what is not a violation. So ATS does not have unfettered authority to do that. What we do is a process through the support of the program, saying, you told me to send you this, that this is a violation per your rules. And that's what we do. So, that was never entered into the record, so when the ruling was made, that was not part of the evidence, and so the ruling was made without that information there. So that's a big part of it that we see is a problem. The second part of it, you could look at it a lot of different ways. The way the process works is, when that violation is approved by the officer, comes back to ATS, ATS creates the document and mails that document to the violator on your behalf, based on the officer's review. If nothing happens with that, if the violator doesn't do anything, after 60 days, that's, the system will take that violation notice and will automatically convert it into a citation. And that's done automated, nobody touches it, it's an automatic process based on a due date, okay? We will then take that created citation, and we will mail it on behalf of the client, and that's what goes out. And then we also send a copy of that file to the courts. So that's the process. So, the question came up of, well, ATS should not be doing that, it should be done by law enforcement or by the client. So, that was the other ruling that came out of it. Again, because there's not a real good explanation of how the process works, perhaps it was interpreted differently, it wasn't, there wasn't evidence that they could rule on, so I can respect and understand where they may have done that ruling. So, a couple of things we looked at, and we feel that the contracts that are in place in the state of Florida and pretty much every agreement is the same setup as Hollywood is, where your business rules guide what we do. It's not our decision, it's not our point, it's not our program, they're not our events. So there's a couple of things that we looked at that we remedied, that we think would remedy this, as an option and a recommendation to clients. A lot of clients are deciding to do nothing and let this process work itself through for whatever their reasons are, their legal advice. But we offered a couple of solutions, proactively. So one of the solutions is, reference to the business rules. We are gonna, we have the business rules in place, and one of the recommendations was that some of the clients are sending out what is basically a directive from the City Manager, from the Mayor, confirming to ATS that you must follow these business rules when you review any of the violations. Basically confirming what we already do. A second part of that, to address the citations part, is we are working on instituting an additional step, just as a precaution, and again, this is a choice that you'll have if you want to do it or you don't, a precaution to send that UTC, that citation, back to the city for one more review before that document's ever created. So it'll allow that law enforcement officer to look at it one more time, even though they already said it was a violation, but it'll look at it one more time to confirm, this is good, go ahead and mail it on our behalf. So those are a couple of steps that we put in there to proactively offer that to clients and say, if you want to do this, here's some things that you can do. Now, we respect that there's interpretations and different thoughts on how to proceed with this. Our view on it is that these are two, those two pockets of the decision is what we want to address. We feel that the current contracts in place should be able to move forward without interruption. We feel that the current contracts in place should be able to move forward without interruption, and we will do whatever we can, and we've already started doing that, to support clients with some solutions internally. The good news is, the statute itself wasn't really addressed, the statute wasn't challenged, it didn't say that the Mark 1 Act is not valid, and this is more procedural, and so there's a lot of different things that could be done procedurally to correct it if the client feels that they need to. Uh, we've also provide, worked with the city of Hollywood, they've already filed the appeal, and we will support them in everywhere we can as well with that process, and most of it has just been able to put into the record at some point, the business rules and how the process really works. And with that, that's kind of a high level of the two pockets of the decision, and I'll certainly open it up to Mr. Villalobos, of course, and answer whatever questions I can.
Thank you very much.
Uh, really, I understand that the gentleman is not an attorney, so it would be really unfair for me to discuss issues that are directed to legal matters with the gentleman that comes home from ATS. There is a ruling by the Fourth District Court of Appeals that says that the present system is not legal. So, that's number one. Number two, that is open for a disposition, for a rehearing, so, uh, the way that it worked is that the, that particular citation went out through the system and it went out to a circuit court judge. The circuit court judge issued a written order, that order was appealed, um, and it was affirmed by the Fourth District Court of Appeal. So, yes, the District Court of Appeal is going to have a rehearing. I'm going to get together with ATS's attorneys for them to give me a copy of the briefs that they have filed. But actually, it's really not quite fair to say that they have to follow exactly our rules. We don't make law, we just have contracts, and even if our contract was deficient, we have to abide by what the, finally, what the court is going to say. Uh, I have to advise you all that there are already two, at least, or three class action lawsuits filed, so, um, and one inquiry from a lawyer to our city about what is it that we're doing in reference to this issue. Uh, I had to get together with the attorney and find out exactly what is it that they're trying to do, because, number one, we think that the program is a good program, we think that it has saved a lot of lives, we think that it has saved a lot of accidents. Uh, I have been ticketed at, sometimes, and I assure you that I was not burned twice in the same place, um, and now I'm more careful, so I don't like to be the subject of citation, and this works psychologically throughout the universe. Nobody wants to be ticketed, so you're going to take more citation. This is just like, if you know that there's a red light camera there, it's just the same thing as you see a police officer. You're not going to do anything that you potentially think that is going to become a citation of any sort. But there are several issues procedurally that, for instance, presently, the ATS is sending the electronic notification to the court, the judges say that this is illegal, that this cannot be done. They say that, uh, for instance, the tickets are not written by the police officers. I'm not arguing in favor or against the process, I'm just telling you what the Fourth District Court of Appeal stated. So, we have to be prepared to be the subject of a site, of a class action lawsuit, so I have recommended the manager, as we have done before, to follow, I don't want to discuss matters of personal privilege or attorney-client privilege with, in public, because that would not be proper, but to follow essentially the process that we had followed in the past.
Correct.
And I think that that would be, as I say, I believe that this is privileged information, that I should not disclose that in the open forum. So, this is not a simple matter, this is a very complicated matter, which was created by, perhaps, and the order specifically say, and I'm going to read it for the record, it states, had the legislator intended to allow for delegation of this authority or responsibility, just doesn't expressly allow for the delegation review for the traffic infraction direct detector information by employees or agents on the section 316.0083.1. It could have easily done so. In other words, what the court is saying is this, if they wanted us to have followed the procedure that we have been following, the legislator could have done it, but they didn't. So, the court interprets that what had been done at the point is contrary to a state law. So, I get together with the, with the attorneys and I'll find out more information. Uh, I'll see about the brief, oh, by the way, were you a part of the, do you know if ATS was part of the appellate process?
I believe they have, but I don't want to misspeak, I'll let, I'll let them answer that directly. I believe we are.
Okay. Would you, uh, tell the attorneys to send us whatever brief, appellate brief that they have filed, or whatever, whatever information it would be helpful to us?
Sure, we're going to support, and we're going to, we've already started doing that with Hollywood, we're supporting all clients with whatever support they need, we've got some additional counsel that we have been working with as well to make sure we have enough to support everyone, so...
See, one of the problems that we see, that I personally perceive is, I see, presently we have certain expenses, and this I can disclose to you. Uh, we have a police officer viewing the actual tape that comes out from ATS to us, and that officer views that scene and accept it or does not accept the death sentence, okay? If we accept the responsibility of not only viewing it once but viewing it twice, we're going to incur in more expenses, because that same officer or another officer is going to have to review or re-review the document again. If we have to file the actual citation with the court, that will be an additional expense, however minimal. And if we do have to notify the, the city has to notify the violator, the alleged violator, by registered mail, that will be an additional cost to the city. So, it's not simply, let's go ahead and resolve this issue, and this is a solution. There's two solutions. One, the legislation, the legislature will just go ahead and cure this, and number two, we have to, that would be prospectively, but we cannot act retroactively. Whatever happened, happened, and we have to be facing with, um, the possibility of being a target.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For Mr. Counselor and also for you, actually, in this moment, the final decision of this matter is subject to the future hearing that is going to be held, right?
To an appeal.
Not only, well, not to an appeal, it's already been appealed.
Hearing is coming, right?
It's a rehearing.
It might be a rehearing.
Rehearing, sorry.
Okay.
Right ahead, finish. The rehearing may or not, may not be granted, okay?
Well, I just, I just ask you, the actual situation is, the statute code of the problem, the actual thing, is subject, the final decision in this is subject to the death rehearing or hearing in the future, right?
Correct.
All right, that's, that's my question. We are not in violation of anything, we're just waiting for that hearing or rehearing, right? Yeah, sir, yeah, let me, let me, Villalobos, the counselor, please.
Let me put it this way.
No, but... That's my question, okay? We're just waiting for that hearing or rehearing, right?
Let me put it this way, we're still ticketing, we're still sending violations out, okay?
No, no, the actual thing, that's what I...
One at a time, please, so the record...
I'm going to read it, and, you know, words are to be interpreted the way their plain language is going to be stated. It says, "Not final on the disposition of timely filed motion for rehearing."
All right.
That's what it says.
All right.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I want to submit to your consideration that one of our member of the public has submitted a speaker card to speak on this item.
Okay.
I'm submitting that to you.
If you will, though, I'm going to respect the parliamentary, I know...
Can you come up to the...
Okay. And I'm just going to suggest this, ask someone that's not a lawyer.
State, name for the record, the record's trade.
Elliot Asbell, 15345, Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157. I was not aware, obviously, until I came tonight, that this was on the agenda. It was something that I was aware of in terms of the appellate court decision. It was something that got me to briefly discuss this with Madam Manager, and I just came prepared tonight to put forward, not my legal opinion, although I have a certain amount of legal knowledge and experience, business experience, personal experience, et cetera. More importantly, on the business side, Counsel has readily identified, and I think appropriately, that he prefer, and I don't think this came through in particular to Commissioner Suarez and perhaps none other, that properly, he felt he did not want this publicly discussed in terms of his advice to you and how he, you should proceed and his recommendation, and essentially said typically, when we are involved in workman's comp cases or other litigation or so on, this is his standard practice. So, no matter what anyone said, if I was sitting up there, I personally would say, really doesn't matter what I think, let me wait until Counsel wants to give me his appropriate advice. There's some advice that's been tendered already, I have a little problem with some of it, not doing it, I have a little problem thinking that that's the end result, I have a little problem with the continu-, my major problem is the continuance, which has not been addressed, and the prior action, which has not been addressed prior to the appellate. And I'll remind you of the city of Miami and its fire taxes that they did and collected for years with a double permit and blah, 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 there came a court decision and blah. And the end result, there was a deal made or whatever, but it was incumbent upon the city of Miami to make restitution to all of those businesses that they had collected over a period of time. Let me suggest to you as a non-lawyer that it is probably true, and I'll leave it to Counsel to mention this in private, it is probably true that prior tickets can be appealed at this stage of the game by people, matter of fact, they have been, maybe not with the city of West Miami, but in Day County jurisdiction per se. This appellate court is, forget that it was Hollywood and Bowery County, it applies to Day County. Uh, I would act with an abundance of caution, A, there's not much you can do about prior tickets being issued, and yes, that's going to have to wait for a retirement, but I'm telling you that I would act with an abundance of caution and do one of two things. I would either cease at this moment any issuing of further tickets pending resolution of this matter, because what you're going to hear, if it bounces the way that a lot of people want to tell you it's not going to bounce, uh, then you're going to have an accrual of debt in terms of suits to be the individual violator's reckoning. So, I don't think we could just sit here and wait, there needs to be an informed decision. Now, if you want to go ahead and issue the tickets, after you're advised that what I'm saying is totally off the wall and not possible, by all means, do so. If you're going to do so, I would advise that you at least recognize that there is a pending negativity in terms of your income, forgetting about the costs and whatever, and make some process to balance out the equation. I would say that maybe the reserves or a separate reserve count and an abundance of caution, if you were issuing tickets, you know how many tickets have been collected each month, keep your tally list and have a reserve fund, because to pretend, no matter who advises you, that there is not a negative ramification, that is a possibility, as Counsel said, well, the legislature can read. Let me remind you, not to negate Counselor, but the legislature already did that with this program. They went back and said it's faulty and they remodeled it. It is the remodeling that you are complying with that has now been felt on Constitution. So, just that it goes back to the legislature is not necessarily the final adjudication of the red light. You have a passionate issue here, and there are committed passionate people that are willing to fight this, okay? And I think it's irresponsible to move forward, I personally wouldn't, but I think it's irresponsible to move forward without setting up a balancing fund as a contingency as relates to the negativity that may arise. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, I'd just like to say for the record that I, I hear the passion of my very good friend.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but I want to, my very good friend have known me for many years, right?
Yes, sir.
And has known the administration, the Madam Manager for many years, right?
Yes, sir.
You would believe that we had spent countless hours to study this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Um, as I understand, this is actually a report, so...
No action is necessary, and from, from our office, please understand that, and be assured and reassured, that we are working with the city attorney, the vendor, the police department, to find a, the, the correct course of action, but the city has taken measures to, without saying much more, the city is taking, I want to say proactive steps to work, to walk in the right track.
Please, thank you.
If I may, I just wanted to clarify, I can respect, and it's always a very passionate subject, that's why I always sit in the back of the room, don't wear any distinguishing clothes, so I understand that, and I respect, and I respect everyone's views. Uh, some of the things to consider here, there are some to the point of, what do you do today moving forward? I think we've offered a couple of proactive solutions that will help protect and improve that, and it's something we need to share more in detail so that it's done on a legal basis and not my interpretation of it, but I think there's some good things that are going to be in place on the citation side, and that really, all of this comes down to that big problem with the citation. And what I explained briefly, one of the opportunities that we're doing is, we're going to have that file, that file sent back to the review officer, just as an additional step. There are some additional costs, but the number of actual citations that get reviewed again is very small compared to the number that you actually issue and get paid. You've got a very good program here, not only in the success of the program on the safety side, but you've got a high payment rate, so what eventually turns into citations is a lot smaller number than you might think. So, what comes back to an officer for the citation review, that second review, is a smaller number. There is an additional cost, of course, but the way we're going to do that is to make it as quickly and as efficient as we possibly can for that. So, there are going to be some costs, but it's, I don't want somebody to overblow what that's going to be, because it may not be like that. Having said that, we respectfully will support whatever you all need to do, including the issuance of the actual citation documents to the court. Again, we have a remedy, we have solutions, we have options, we're going to provide those, and our clients will select what works best for them. So, I do appreciate the questions, and I understand it, extremely passionate program. You've got one of those great success stories here, and I think we have things in place that'll help us move forward. So, with that, I'll, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, at this time, I just wanted, Chief, you want to add something?
Okay.
The only thing I want to say is that...
There's a lot of, I don't mean to interrupt, but there's a lot of times, so, Mr. Mayor, that less is more.
Less is more, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Talking about less is more, it's nine o'clock, um, after...
After I finish here, I've got to go back to work. So we have a full agenda, and there's still a lot that we need to discuss. So I will ask for everybody to move quickly, let's not be redundant, and get to the point. At this time, I would like to go back to the original agenda, right from the beginning, and then we'll take each item as quickly as possible. Thank you. Item four, presentation of minutes.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for October 15, 2014, regular city commission meeting, Mayor Muhina abstains.
Mayor, I was checking the minutes. I don't see any discrepancy, I don't see any mistakes, so I make a motion for approval.
I second the motion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, aye. Item five, report of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a written report, however, I'd like to report on a couple of items. As provided by our city engineers, our office is extremely busy, as is Mr. Penna, the clerk, and all of us that have to deal with all these projects coming to fruition. But I wanted to report for the benefit of the public is, the city of West Miami went live today for the first time on the issue of accepting water and sewer payments online. The software component was completed yesterday, there's a little bit of tweaking. We have had webinars, we're doing garbage, our sanitation bills are now also online, and people could go in there and pay their bill. They can view their water bill online, they can make payments by using either their debit card, American Express, MasterCard, and Visa. So I think we've made, in a year's time, in about 16 months' time, I think we've made incredible progress with our website. And it's evidenced by the number of users that we're seeing. We have, Google provides an analytical report, and we have about 70 or 75 new people who visit our website every day. For a city this size, that's huge. And so I think we're providing a lot of information on the website, a lot more than other cities, because I do take the time to go to the other and visit their websites to see. And I mean, if we're ever accused of not being transparent, I think, yeah, that's the wrong city to accuse. We have all of our commission meetings and archives online. You have your planning and zoning, your code enforcement board meetings online, you have all agendas, all minutes, resolutions, you've got picture galleries, you have all events, you have code enforcement, your com plan, and the list gets longer. Your financial statements, all your budgets are online on PDF forms, all notifications on elections, I mean, like I said, the list is long. We're going to go ahead and include a copy of the memo issued by the engineer so that the community knows what kind of projects we're going to be involved with. So the webpage is taking a life of its own. But believe me, it takes a lot of work, and we're all working very hard to make it happen. So I hope you're pleased with that. The next item in my report is the Florida League of Cities. We'll be here next week. They're going to be auditing us for, they're going to be doing an asset survey in the city of West Miami on the 12th and on the 13th of November. It's a two-day process. We're going to be greeting them in our office, and obviously, they'll be assigned to our different department directors, but this takes a lot of paperwork as well. We've got to share fixed assets with them, they have to go and visit our real properties, and, you know, it's a process. Our auditors are ready to start probably in the next two weeks. I have a meeting with Mr. Troeva next week to talk about the exchange of information that he's going to need from finance, from my office, from the clerk's office, on all the resolutions. So a lot of things are happening that keep us on our toes. One thing I wanted to report is, on Tuesday, November 11, it is Veterans Day, City Hall will be closed, there will be garbage collection service, we will publish this on the website as well, and of course, police service never stops. So a happy Veterans Day in recognition of all those who have served to protect this country. We've calendared the mayor and the vice mayor and the members of the city commission, we've calendar due on our Thanksgiving at the community center and the holiday program at the community center. And I need to note for the record that Commissioner Suarez has secured all the turkeys for both the congregate and the home-delivered meals. He's working closely with our office and the community center director's office to make sure that all the seniors get their, and the needy family get their turkeys.
And to the Micasupquis.
And thank you to, exactly, thanks to the Micasupqui tribe.
As you're very generous with our residents.
So a lot of things are happening. I apologize for not giving you a written report, but it's been nonstop. Last but not least, I have been invited to participate on behalf of the International Hispanic Network, which basically is a compilation of Hispanic administrators in the country. I've been asked to serve as a moderator on a panel on immigration reform this coming Friday. It's going to take place at the Renaissance, so if you try to get ahold of me, I'll be at the Renaissance. We have, actually, they have reached out to a former member of the city commission. Dr. Enrique Gonzalez will be addressing, he'll be part of the panel talking about immigration. So if you have time at 1:00, the panel --
I check in my messages, and that is sponsored by the Florida League of Cities, the Dade County League of Cities.
They're one of the sponsors.
I expect to go there Friday.
Friday at 1:00 is the panel, and that's been, actually, it's being organized by manager Jocelyn Galliano, Village of Pinecrest. She is the regional director for the organization, and she's asked --
Miami, Miami, it's the Dade County League of Cities.
No, Dade County League of Cities is a conduit for the notices. Mr. Cooper has been kind to notice.
I received a message from them.
Yes, yes, they're helping us spread the word. And so the actual conference will take place on Friday. The city clerk has expressed an interest in attending as Mr. Penna, so, and obviously, we will confirm you tomorrow, Commissioner Suarez. And it is open for any member of the city commission, now that the league has actually sent out a blast email to other cities. So I hope I won't let you down. That concludes my report.
Just one item.
Before, we forgot about all the turkeys that are coming from the legal city as well.
Yes, the mayor will be, thank you, Mayor, for reminding me, the mayor, more turkeys. The mayor has instructed us to provide the community center, we're going to have to raffle those on November 18. The Miami-Dade League of Cities has invited the mayor's office to participate in the turkey drive and the food drive that the League of Cities has for needy and senior citizens, and discussed it as well with Chairman Suarez, and he has delegated in Commissioner Candy Blanca to go with the group and our driver to take our seniors to pick up the turkeys given out by the Dade League of Cities. Mayor, thank you for working with Mr. Richard Cooper on that, and obviously, that's always a nice welcome Thanksgiving present for our seniors. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Penna?
Just one note on the manager's report. The code enforcement hearings are available online, but they're not readily accessible. You have to get a password, because they are private in nature because of the actions, so they're not readily available online.
Which ones are those?
Code enforcement hearings.
The code enforcement hearings.
Thank you.
Correct.
Okay. Item nine?
Item nine, citizen presentations, no presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Item 10, under unfinished business. Item 10A, report by the office of the city manager and discussion in reference to city's life insurance group policy by city manager, mayor, and city commission.
Thank you. By the manager, this is an item that I would like to defer. I think this is an important item where we need a full commission. Respect to Candy Blanca, that is not present, I think I would like to defer this item.
Mr. Mayor, once a commission, obviously, this is a complex situation that arose after the insurance renewal. I have briefed every member of the city commission on what the issues are, and it may take a little bit more deliberation, so hopefully, next week, I'll get to meet with you individually again and discuss the options that the city has so that we can move forward and bring it to your attention at the next city commission meeting, if you choose to defer this evening.
Okay. Are we in favor of deferring this item? Thank you.
Yes.
It's Resolution B in reference to that, or something?
Yes, that would be a deferring of that item as well.
Okay.
Item 10B is deferred. Also, Mr. Mayor, I want to bring to your attention, we skipped item six, the report of city attorney. Just as an item, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney.
Next item will be item --
Committee reports.
Committee reports.
You skipped committee reports.
Oh, the mayor reported on the committee report in reference to your 20-year-old manager.
Okay.
So the next item will be the item 10C, request by the office of city manager and discussion in reference to workers' compensation program, which is a request for deferral to.
Right.
Okay.
Those two issues, where, on the issue of the workers' compensation, I am respectfully requesting that we defer indefinitely until I have something more concrete. We are working with the county on bringing some solutions and on some issues that are lingering in terms of unfunded liability on workers' comp issue, but we need some time. And this item, it'll probably be sometime in the beginning of 2015 that we'll be able to address this.
Thank you. Thank you. How about item F?
Item F?
11F. Yes, that'll be the following item. A resolution of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute a mutual aid agreement with the city of Miami Shores Police Department for continued mutual support, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
By the manager?
Thank you. As you know, Mr. Mayor, we bring all these mutual aid agreements to you for formal approval via a resolution. I think the chief is probably the authority to speak on what mutual aid represents and why we are bringing a mutual aid agreement for, between the city of West Miami and Miami Shores Police Department for mutual support. Chief, could you give us a brief?
Yes, again, it's similar, the wording is almost identical with all the other mutual aid agreements. We never know what can happen, and we'd like to be able to have that. One thing that the Dade County Association of Chiefs of Police is doing, or trying to do to avoid this, is have one mutual aid agreement that everybody signs, so that every year, we don't have to have a bunch of these. And hopefully, that'll get done by next year, but at this point, since that's not done, that's why we're asking to execute this agreement.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion.
Any question?
Second.
Okay. Call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanick?
Yes.
Mayor Muhina?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Next item is item 11G, report by the office of the city clerk in reference to unofficial results of city of West Miami charter amendment questions on the ballot of November 4, 2014 elections. If available, they were made available by the Department of Elections last night, and I compiled the results, and also, you were submitted with a report by my office in reference to the, what the, actually, the results were of the last night's election, November 4. And I'm reporting that following, I mean, results submitted by the Department of Elections on charter amendment number one, on Article 3, Section 302, qualifications to hold office and residency requirement. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Do you want me to read the question and submit to you the results, or how do you want me to proceed?
Actually, well, I have two questions. One, now, these are --
These are the unofficial results.
Official, still, okay. Well, what I would like is for the attorney to clarify, you know, what's the implication, like, for instance, some of them are yes, and, but particularly, the ones are no, and I would like for, I know that I'm the one that said, to speed up the process, but I think this is something that we spent a long time in discussing during the charter amendment. Finally, it went through fruition, people voted on it, and now, I want to, you know, make sure that we understand the, I asked the city attorney.
I have a question.
Okay, but I, Mr. Attorney, can we take one by one, like, for instance, the charter amendment number one?
Sure, there are questions before, so I can address the question.
Okay, what are the questions? Go ahead.
My question is to you, Mayor. Now, what are you doing, what are you asking today? You don't have the certification from the Election Department yet. Why don't you wait until they have the certification from the Election Department, and then she make a written report, and she put in front of each of us a written report, and then we have that conversation with the attorney. Once we have the certification from the Election Department, and we have a written report in front of each of us, and the councilor have the same report, and then we go line by line.
Okay. Are we all in agreement with that?
I think so, I think it'd be easier, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner?
Well, just to avoid duplication, I think we do it today, but we do it again once it's official. I don't know.
Let's not do it now, and just do it later.
But my recommendation, instead of today, do it next, in next --
I have no problem, that's fine.
In next commission, that we have certificated from the Election Department, and we have the written report already certified, and, you know, and we do it completely.
And area, when would the official results be?
On November 14.
Okay.
So that's November 14, our next meeting is?
We'll issue the official results.
19, right?
November 14.
When is our next meeting?
Our next commission meeting is November 19.
Okay, so.
Okay, so you'll have enough time to prepare the report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so then, okay, I'm in agreement, so let's put it on the agenda for the next committee.
You're being provided with the results, and you know what the decision of our electors was.
Unfortunately, Commissioner Blanca will be here present, too.
Hopefully so. Thank you. And next item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11H, request for proclamation in recognition of the legal legend award to our city attorney, Jose Villalobos. This is sponsored by Mayor Muhina.
Wow.
Legal legend.
Very proud. By the way, I wrote something that I, in my running around, I forgot, but I don't have to, I can shoot from the hip. Mr. Attorney, I don't know if you know the history, but our attorney came to the city many, many, many years ago. Our city was sued due to a nativity event.
Display.
And pro bono, our city attorney came to the rescue. And perhaps he can enlighten us in that little incident. And from there, it is history. I mean, our attorney is above and beyond, he goes above and beyond call of duty in to represent the city. If you ask around who Pepe Yalobos is, I have never, ever heard anything negative about, except for the opposing counsel, but for the most part, it's a very elegant, very shrewd attorney, somebody that we all should be proud of. And I think he needs to be recognized. He, his name is going to go in history as one of the top attorneys in, not only in the county, but I know it will renown throughout many, many places. So with that, I would like to ask for recognition to our legal legend. So if anybody wants to say anything else, please welcome.
Isn't he also the longest-serving attorney that we've had here?
Something like that.
They had the horse and buggies, you know, when he's --
Can we put the years in the words?
He and I are competing for years.
Land is 30 plus 20, so Villalobos...
No, no, 30 plus 20.
That's why my question, see, you got it, right?
I got it.
But I, what I would like, I, I would like to hear from, from our attorney, uh, to, to give us a little bit of, uh, uh, 'cause I know, I know he's very proud, and, uh, the other night, we had a, a long conversation, uh, about this item. Uh, I mean, I, I decided to put this item on the agenda because it, I think it's well worth it. Uh, so, how did this came about, Mr. Attorney?
Well, when I...
In your humble opinion?
When I was told that I was going to be nominated for Legal Legends Award, I thought that those were awarded to people that have passed on. So, I was not very thrilled about that, but, um, when I saw that there had been 90 nominees throughout, uh, the county by the Historical Society of Miami-Dade County, uh, legal industry, uh, I felt very humble and very proud. Some say that, um, modesty should not be a virtue. Uh, I have not ever seen in any library an anonymous book, uh, or a piece, a brilliant piece, uh, written in the newspaper, uh, and by an anonymous writer. Uh, even the Gettysburg Address has an author. So, I think that, um, when I speak about, uh, this award, I speak in the sense of not only my personal pride, uh, but also, uh, the fact that, uh, this is the way that, uh, all people in society should act. Uh, there were 90 nominees, and I was honored by being, uh, the highest, uh...
Recipient.
Well, well, a number of votes. Uh, in order to be a nominee, you have to have been in practice for at least 25 years. And you have to have had not only, uh, uh, legal experiences, but also, um, social experiences and, uh, uh, issues that, um, uh, the community have benefited by. One of the brightest, I guess, moments that I ever had was when I was, uh, called by a judge from the juvenile division and was, um, asked whether or not I wanted to be guardian at lightem. And of course, I said yes. Uh, this was a brilliant judge and a very humane judge, but little did I know that, uh, the number of children were 1,500, pro bono. And those were children that had come from a real, that had no family, no parents, and no relatives, uh, even if they had had relatives that had been thrown out in the streets. And, um, I was charged with the responsibility of, um, of making sure that those childrens were properly guided, uh, clothed, and sheltered, and fed. And that was a, a very happy moment for me because I was able to give something for what this country had given me, an opportunity to do good for everybody else. I have been blessed by being in the midst of confrontation. Uh, years and years ago, when the Madoffi trials, uh, came to a completion, there was a great upheaval in, in Miami-Dade County, and I was advised, I was asked to be the moderator between the conflicted factions. When people were throwing bricks, I was shouting words. And, uh, thanks to the assistance of, uh, authorities, the police of the City of Miami, and the people around me, uh, issues were resolved. So when they say that they were going to award this to me, I mean, I, I feel very good, frankly. And, um, I wish that, um, a lot of people would exercise, it's not a duty, but it's a calling, uh, to give back to the community something that the community had given you, an opportunity to be free. Uh, and sometime in the future, you're gonna say it was worthwhile. Thank you.
Wow, I'm touched.
Nice speech. Nice speech.
Um, Mr. Mayor, to add to that, uh, and, and Mr. Villalobos is very humble about, uh, as they say, tooting his own horn, um, but I want to also, for the record and for the benefit of those that were not here, uh, I was. In 1984, the city was sued, uh, by a then-resident by the name of David Weinberger.
Don't mention his name.
And, um, Mr. Villalobos came, uh, after the mayor at the time, and that was Ms. Valerie Hickey Patton, and she has since passed away. Mayor, uh, Hickey Patton contacted Mr. Villalobos when the city was actually served with a lawsuit for displaying a nativity set in the front lawn of City Hall. Uh, that case, that case went to a jury trial.
And, and Jewish, uh, ordinance?
And, and the menorah as well, which we displayed in front of our, our lawn here, um, to honor the, um, various religions. Um, Mr. Villalobos came to aid the City of West Miami at a time where we had no legal reserves, um, no money in the budget to, um, defend the position of the city, um, and Mr. Villalobos defended our case before the Honorable Judge Lawrence King, correct, Mr. Villalobos?
Correct. But it was not a jury trial, it was a bench trial.
It was a bench trial, I'm sorry. It's been a long time, but I do recall, uh, that the, the case was a landmark case. Uh, we actually made nation, national news at the time, and Mr. Villalobos donated, um, him and, and his legal team defended the, the city, um, very eloquently and, and with a lot of honor and dignity, and, um, and so, that's how Mr. Villalobos came to know the City of West Miami. At the time, we had an attorney that was preparing for his retirement, and the commission at the time saw fit to obviously award the, uh, because of his qualifications and because of what Mr. Villalobos had done for the city, well, the city felt that it was, uh, time to, to obviously recognize Mr. Villalobos. And back, um, Mr. Villalobos was appointed to the position of city attorney, if my memory doesn't fail me, on August 20th, 1994. So, um, since then, he has been serving, uh, this coming, I, I, I mean, it, you just celebrated your 20th year, correct?
Correct.
As city attorney, and he is the longest-serving city attorney in any municipality.
Florida.
In, in, actually, I think, in the state of Florida. So, you've, you've got some history here, um, and, and, and I think it's, um, it, it's an honor to have someone like Jose Villalobos, who is so highly regarded in the community, and so well-respected, um, as our city attorney. So, I'm blessed to have you as, as our counsel, and I enjoy working with you, Mr. Villalobos, and congratulations to you and to your family for the Legal Legend Award.
Thank you.
All right.
So, history here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Villalobos.
Yes, sir.
The only story that your father, Lolo, is not viewing this, right, present in this?
Well, he is present.
His father was a very famous person in Cuba.
He's right here with us.
Oh, I know. Well, I, that's what I'm talking, because I was thinking about him, because he was a good friend of mine. So I was thinking about your father while you was talking.
Um, did you want the recognition on the next commission agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Please do.
November 19th?
19th.
Okay.
Next item?
Item 11I, report by the office of the city manager in reference to 2014 lighting of the tree ceremony event and sponsorships by city manager.
That time again, huh?
Mr. Mayor, it's just like, I don't know, time is just flying by, but, um, the good news is we have, uh, commitments as of this afternoon to the tune of $6,000 from our corporate sponsors. Um, we're putting together the program and the flyers is being prepared. Uh, Mr. Quintana and Cardi are working on it. Um, we have the, a, a proposal for the Little Carnival services. We have confirmations from Somerset, um, Sylvania Heights, and the Lord's Jazz Cat Singers, uh, for the performance at the park. Mr. Penn, of course, and his team will be putting together the, uh, the decorations to make the park very nice for the kids. Uh, we have a commitment from Baron de Paret. Um, he will be here as a pro bono photographer, as he does every year. And so, we're working, and as soon as we have the program or a tentative program, we will be sending you information, uh, on that. We've contacted, we're actually, um, in the process of trying to secure, um, someone from Temple Beth to come and, and obviously, address the, the community with the holiday message, and as well, we would like to invite, uh, Chaplain Arnold Perry, who is the official chaplain for the West Miami Police Department, to also render his holiday, uh, message. So, we'll, we'll continue to work with, uh, fine-tuning the program, and we'll give you something by the end of next week.
I have one question.
Yes.
Has anyone contacted the North Pole for Santa Claus yet?
Uh, Santa Claus will be, uh, yes, he will be visiting the City of West Miami on December 16th.
Because he's got a lot of places to go, just wanted to be sure we get him reserved.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Now, does anybody have, uh, Margot Roofing and Speed Dial?
Well, I'm thinking about, yeah.
So...
I'm thinking, the, the downstairs, you know, the water pouring.
Well, we're, we're prepared, we've got buckets.
Item J, please.
Item 11J, request for authorization...
Mr. Penn, you got a bucket from my office?
Request for authorization to close City Hall on December 24th, 2014, and on December 31st, 2014, by city manager.
By the manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, as we do every year, we come to you to ask you to allow our employees to be off on the 24th of December, and then again on December 31st, so that they can enjoy the holidays with their families.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Next item?
Thank you.
I think the agenda has been covered.
Yes.
Well, that's right. Okay, yeah, okay, uh, okay, go to the order.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one final item, and this is, again, I apologize, but we've been dealing with so many different things that it, this, I skipped this item. We have been asked to, uh, submit our name for the, um, give me one second, and I will get you the correct information in a moment. Mr. Penn, my phone is not working.
You're a fool.
Hey. No.
He hasn't answered.
I, I can't. I can't access my email, but basically, we have been invited, uh, Commissioner, Chairwoman Sosa has submitted our name for, as a potential, um, as a potential candidate city to receive a, an award that's issued by the Department of Health and Safety. I spoke to Gil Fernandez with Miami-Dade County and to Olga O'Connor with the Department of Health, and we would like to submit, if you approve it, uh, for consideration that the City of West Miami Recreation Center and Community Center be issued an award for promoting wellness, uh, at the park and at the community center. Uh, this is a, um, a statewide recognition. There are more than one categories, and it's basically for promoting, promoting a healthy and fun recreational, uh, facility, as well as a senior, um, nu, uh, nutrition and exercise center, uh, and it basically addresses wellness, and I think we have all the elements to be considered for a candidacy. So, if you would allow us, we would like to put the, um, the item on the next agenda with a request for a proclamation that they're asking cities as well to pass.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anything else for the go-to-the-order?
That's it.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.